...expensive pledge of allegiance. This is a working meeting. We are not video or audio taping with cable access, but we do have sporadic video recording.
Okay.
So tonight's meeting, we called to have our chief of police, fire chief, Mr. Woodrow, highway surveyor, Mr. McKean from SERC, the board, to discuss the direction of SERC moving forward, the involvement of our first responders, our fire and police, and the direction we want to take SERC moving forward. Now, Tim is pretty much no longer involved, I guess, would you say?
Likely helps out, can't it?
So, so I guess the meeting was just to get everybody together to open up the discussion as to where we want to go, what we want to do, how we want to utilize the services moving forward. So with that, I don't know where I want to start with this. If Mr. Gagin would like to start.
One of the concerns that I hear is the self-activation, which we have discussed before. So, we've asked, and you had asked, that the two chiefs come in to discuss their take on it, when SERC should be activated, when SERC should kind of sit back and just wait.
So with that being said, I guess-
They're getting a phone call.
Sorry.
Thanks for your time.
You like that?
You know, I've taught at a few other communities that how they operate their SERC. A lot of it is generally coordinated through fire, police, with highway with some involvement. I feel it's important that Bruce and Adam are involved, especially when it comes to manning people and putting them in the roads. I just don't know if this is going to become a contractual issue next year with both of your contracts being up, if it's something that we need to discuss when it comes to contract time, and what your involvement would be. If you want to be involved, what your thoughts are on SERC, what you think the town should be doing moving forward, that's in the best interest of the town, so that we're not just coordinating and putting people out there to direct traffic or whatnot, it's not coordinated through you or through the channel of communication and how this should happen. Can either of you shed some light on experiences or-
Absolutely. I actually, I met Jimmy the other day, and when this whole project started several years ago, I met him a number of times with Buzz and also Tim. And what we've typically done is if we have a function where we think we're going to need additional personnel, whether it's just to block a road, or stand behind a barricade, or help people on the crosswalk, then I've reached out and said, hey, we can use these people. Like, most recently at the pumpkin garden we were using for the crosswalks, the Memorial Day Parade.
Yeah.
But in my experience in the past, I've always reached out. And I know there's been times where Jimmy's called the station and said, do you need a hand? And if we needed it, we said yes; if not, we said no. But, I mean, for the, I mean, it's only a couple of times a year we're asking them.
But if, all right, let me, let me go further. Let's say there's an emergency situation or you're, how should we, how should we utilize them? I mean, I see the email chain that comes out, you know, we get an email, who's, you know, what's going on, or what we're planning on, you know, with the tree lighting ceremony and whatnot. Who should be facilitating that? I mean, should it be directly coming from the person in charge of SERC? Should it be coming through police and fire? Police and fire be contacting them first to coordinate this?
I, we've talked about this. I don't have a problem with them reaching out and saying, do you need the help? And quite frankly, if we don't need it, we'll just tell them that we don't need it. But one of the times that SERC really was a huge benefit to us was when we had to set up the emergency shelter operation. I didn't have the resources to man that adequately, and these people had been provided the training in shelter operations, and they were a huge asset.
I think, if I, you know, I agree that the SERC team has been a great asset to the community, especially for pre-planned events with regard to traffic control and stuff. And I think that that has been a great asset. And I think, I think there's a misunderstanding with regard to the emergency activation side of it, if I'm understanding correctly. And I think, you know, basically, I know there's been a few instances where we've had members of the SERC team show up on emergency calls. And I don't necessarily think, during a shelter activation, obviously, I think that that's, you know, that's, to me, from a fire standpoint, that's the number one and most important job that we can see that SERC could assist with would be the emergency shelter operation. This is something that takes a tremendous amount of undertaking to open the shelter. There's all kinds of requirements that go along with it, to have quarry individuals, individuals that have been quarried, excuse me, individuals that have been trained to, you know, facilitate moving people along, getting them to where they need to be. And that's where, you know, a main focus of where I see, you know, after the storm we had and everything like that. I think that the issue is, is that, you know, from what I've heard, is that, you know, whether or not SERC is to self-activate during an emergency, specifically car accidents, you know, other things that the fire department may be related into, police may be related into. And I think that, that it's probably a good idea to make sure that they, you know, the person reaches out or the team reaches out and asks simply, do you need the help before it's activated? And I think it's, from my understanding from other communities and stuff, it's a liability reason. You know, if someone was to be hurt or something like that with regard to being on scene or something, is that person technically covered if they weren't activated correctly? If they just, you know, if no one knows they were there and something happens to them, could there be a problem? And I think that's where the issue might come from, from my understanding from hearing before I was called into the meeting tonight, so-
I think that was our main consideration as to whether or not we were in liability if they weren't activated by one of the heads of the department.
Well, you know, from an accountability standpoint, I can understand that. And I think that's, it sounds like that's the issue. I mean, I think SERC's a great asset. I think if they obviously have a place, they're well-trained, they know exactly what they're, you know, what they're doing, and when they're tasked to do it, they do exactly that. But I think that the activation should probably come directly from, you know, a department head or a request from a SERC member to a department head, hey, I know this is going on, this is an upcoming event or something, do you need us? I think that's where we need to straighten it out, I guess, is the issue.
So if a request comes into our office to do something downtown, is it your recommendation that we should be forwarding the request to you, one of you, to facilitate it with SERC if you need them for whatever services, whatever's going on downtown? I'm just using downtown as an example. Because they're possibly going to contact our office, contact Loretta and say, hey, we want to go downtown, we want to do this, or whatever, or have a fair or something. Should we immediately push that towards you guys and have you guys contact SERC to coordinate this? Or what, who should take the lead on this?
I think that, I think that the department heads can handle that. I don't think that's something that the board needs to concern itself with. When it comes to the staffing issues, I mean, like you said, if it's an emergency situation, we activate incident command and incident commanders, we need to know what personnel we have, what resources are available, so it would be imperative that the SERC team let us know of who we've got, what they've got, and where we can allocate those resources. But I don't think the board needs to concern itself with even the other events that happen, like down in the town hall, and I'm usually coordinating those anyway from a public safety standpoint. And if I need that assistance, or if I need, you know, the SERC team, then I can reach out to them, or they can reach out and say, do we need that assistance? But I don't think the board really takes those-
If Tom, if Tom was tearing up a street, if he needed traffic, he would get a hold of you.
He would get a detail on it.
So if you wanted to use them, you would still get a hold, so it would still be between you two.
Right.
Can we use SERC for traffic like that, though?
I don't know.
Are we, I'm just saying, I mean, I know there's a big issue with flagrant and stuff like that, but I'm saying-
I would just, I would just like to know if Tom, I don't know, anything else, reason Tom would use them.
Isn't there a certification for flagrant?
Yes.
There has to be a specific certification for-
Correct.
For that type of job.
And you don't do that type of certified, yeah?
Yeah.
You are?
Yeah.
You don't, pretty much.
My department's certified too.
How does that impact our police now with their salary structure and it being part of their contract and doing site road details and that?
Right, we haven't gone in that direction yet, so I really can't speak on that.
As far as a road project situation comes up, as I've talked to chief before, and I know the roads where if I'm going to be there on an extended amount of time, I need a detail. If I want to be on these roads for an extended amount of time, I don't need a detail depending on where I'm on the road. If it's something to where I'm going to be there for two hours, kind of a so-so spot, I'll put, I'll let him know that I'm going to be there, and I'll put one of my guys on as long as he says that's okay. If he wants me to get a detail, I get a detail, so.
So actually, excuse me, so actually, you wouldn't be activating all the, the two?
I would have-
You would have nothing?
The only way that I would have interaction with SERC would be for a weather-related emergency. And even in that case, I'd be going through them because-
Two chiefs, so two chiefs.
I actually, I really think that, you know, using that example of, you know, using a SERC member at a, at a construction site really goes way beyond the purview of what SERC is designed for.
That's, that's fine, I was just trying to figure out why Tom really was sitting here.
I was asking, no.
I know.
No, I mean, the truth is, any three of, you know, any one of us could be, could be interacting with SERC team anytime. I mean, the fact of the matter is, we have had, you know, winter storms like we've had many times where, you know, that we could have SERD out with highway working up there, but probably the activation part of it would become, you know, either myself or two Spierkoskis, you know, initially, the activation would come from there. You know, I think, again, the idea is to get a hold of the accountability side of it so that we know what personnel, who requested it, and where, you know, what it was requested for. You know, I mean, like I said, it's, the community events, you know, it's great to have community events, the more the better. And those are, those are, you know, it's a community emergency response team, but that has kind of morphed a lot into being involved with more community events too. So that, and that's fine, that's something I see SERC used for all the time in different communities. That's a great, you know, a great outpouring, a great resource to have them doing that stuff. It's, it's the emergency side of it that can be a little tricky with regard to reimbursement for liability, first of all, for the town, and reimbursement from the feds or the state or something like that with regard to, you know, I mean, if people are just showing up, that's, I think that's the, that was the issue of, you know, why people were called in, and there may have been some rumblings on there, so.
So first and foremost, just in regards to the police contract, road details would go police first, correct? I mean, you're only possibly going to call them if you really don't have anybody to use, or, I mean-
If we don't have a member of our department, we have a chain of other departments that we use and we call for details. And again, that, the, you know, road construction is beyond the purview of what SERC is designed for. In understanding what Chief LaVoce says, that, you know, we've used them for community events as well, and that is true, but Jimmy and I had this discussion the other day. We're a small community, there's not a lot of opportunities for the SERC members to be involved in the different things. Really, the biggest natural disaster we had was the ice storm. We had some blizzards last year where we used members of the SERC team for transport and whatnot. But if we don't provide that organization and those members an opportunity to provide those services or some assistance to the community, then we're going to see it go away for lack of participation and interest, and then when we really need them for natural disaster or other emergency, they're not going to be there for us.
I got that part, but I'm more concerned in fact that we had one huge disaster years ago, and we're not going to have another one. I don't want to see SERC go away, but like you just said, trying to keep them active and keep people active in there, what are we going to purpose them for? And what is it going to become if we start to purpose them for more and more and more? What kind of constraints are they going to put possibly financially on the town if we have to start putting money into this to keep it going? Because it's just, it seems like it's growing to me in my short period of time since the storm. I think there's a time and a place for it. I just don't want it, I don't want it to become a funding issue where we're having to put a lot of money into something that is there for an emergency that we may see once every 10 years. That's my big concern. And the self-activation part, I had some concerns because you brought that up, Mr. Gagin, yourself. So I mean, the purpose in calling everybody here was just to have a good feel for, you know, who's activating, how it's happening, where we're going. And Jim, you haven't had a chance to speak yet, I'd like to turn over to you if there's something you want to add or comment or, you know, share with us.
Every time that it's been, there's been an event. Our biggest one was that running of the shelter back in 2001. That's when we kind of just started, still had some of the older people.
That was a nice mix, by the way, of emergency management and SERC. That was a great coordination effort there. Because emergency management was there to start it off, and then you guys came in and helped out. It was excellent.
Well, that's the other thing we're going to get into too, with two different emergency management and SERC. We're just talking about SERC right now. See, right now, currently, what was Buzz retired from the emergency management. Me and Tim took on co-deputy together, Tim resigned, so right now I am emergency manager, which is responsible for the SERC activation and then it goes to the, to hands. That's how I see it, right?
So how are you activated in emergency management? I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. How are you, how are you activated in emergency management?
Emergency management is between, every town has emergency management.
Right, but how is that emergency management activated? What do you determine that, do they call you out and say, we need emergency management? Or does emergency management say, this is an emergency, and calls out SERC? Because you just said that emergency management activates SERC.
It does.
Okay, so in emergency management, with you being in charge of emergency management, when do you activate? Only when they tell you and then you activate SERC?
I would check in with them.
Okay.
Or if they, so they wouldn't directly activate, you know, all the five. See, I know each, what each member is trained in and what, you know, they could put at task. Some people aren't good with traffic, some people aren't, you know? So they would come through me and have me go down through SERC.
Okay, once activated, or once you determine that an activation, you call in and an activation is necessary?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, moving forward, we shouldn't have any issues with any type of being on a scene and SERC's there when they haven't been activated? That should not occur moving forward?
It shouldn't.
So what if it does?
What do you mean by being on scene?
I got a tree come down across the road, I'm driving home as a SERC member with that jacket on clearing a tree.
That would be the liabilities to the town.
I never called you.
That would be, that would be a matter of-
That would be a citizen.
That would be a matter of him.
Not if they're in the SERC.
They put the SERC vest on, they become SERC.
Right.
Or if the chief's on his way to-
That can't happen in a-
-the scene and somebody's blocking the way.
You're contacted pretty much.
Correct. And they haven't been activated, things of that nature.
Whereas we appreciate the efforts and, you know, the work that everybody does. We just don't want to see people like Jim said, self-activating and causing-
We just want to make sure this is-
We want you to help and be there, but I think, you know, Tom's got a responsibility, Adam and Bruce both have responsibilities, and as long as they're the first ones to make the call to activate, I don't see any problems. It's just that, that call needs to come from the two chiefs and Tom. Maybe you want it to tree or something like that, or a road issue, and Tom's probably going to contact Bruce or Adam also, you know, leading into that, so.
Depending on the severity.
It's just important that we follow the proper chain, you know, in activating, and, you know, we appreciate, like I said, you know, trying to get out there and do something, you know, immediately, but it could become a liability to the town.
And you know, you're on the fire department. What do you do when you're coming in and you're late? You go right to incident command and you let them know you're there. Do you need me, or you radio in from B? In your case, you would radio in from B. I'm at B, do you need me? It's pretty much the same stuff.
That's what, but that's every SERC, you can look back in the chief's phone, I've always called, use the radio, it's, I've never just showed up.
And see, I'm not saying, you know what, we're not saying that, Jim, to be honest with you, I appreciate the work you do, trust me. It's just I want to make sure that we're in the same room, on the same page moving forward so that it functions as a cohesive unit and it's done the proper way, and there's just no confusion. And to be honest with you, I've had some confusion because people have said different things to me, and I'm like, I really can't answer that question, I'm not really sure, you know, who activates or how we do these things. And it's important that we share this in a setting like this. Everybody hears it, it's going to be part of the minutes, and we know moving forward.
Before it becomes an issue, wipe it up.
Right. Adam, Bruce, Tom, this is a working meeting.
No, I think it's-
Is there anything, questions, concerns, anything you guys want to add?
Again, I think it's, you know, it's very, it's important that we continue the SERC team because, you know, I think it's a great asset to the town. I think it's just, it's about setting a precedent so that there's no confusion. As SERC team grows and more members join, that there's no confusion that if they happen to see an emergency scene, or see a fire truck or police car or something, you know, it's not a situation where they just follow to, you know, to figure out what's going on or whatever. It's supposed to be an activation, you know, and that's where the, you know, that's where the protocol should be, I think, you know, for everybody's safety, for everybody's accountability. I think that's the, again, the root issue that we just got to make sure that that's, that's what's wrong with it.
So I'm asking, anyone else?
Yeah, I think it's a matter of, Jimmy having meetings twice a month. I think he has to stress that a team while he's going through whatever he goes through, they can't stop on their own. And they can't stop on their own and get out and put a SERC jacket on without being activated.
Does that call them, come from chiefs to you, to them, correct? Is that the chain that's going to follow?
If that's what everyone raises.
The SERC, the SERC members, you know, they are first responders, they're trained in CPR and stuff. I know for a fact one of the SERC members was out of the town in a community, I saw the emails on it, on-site at a car accident. Absolutely, that is something that you've lost, someone that's trained before other emergency personnel that are trained to higher standard, that person should stop and, because they have the training. And absolutely did, and did the exact, exactly the right thing. And if, you know, and if, you know, Jim was, you know, coming down, just to use this as an example, you know, if he's coming down at an accident and no one else is there yet, I would expect him to stop as a trained first responder. That's not the issue, I don't want, you know, I think, again, the issue is, is that, you know, the, you know, there's been a couple of calls where, you know, the departments have toned out, didn't necessarily need SERC, it was a routine call, and members have showed up. So, again, that, it was, it's just, I think the, you know, after hearing everything, it sounds like there's some complaints were made, you know, that's where we needed to ring it in. I mean, that's, that's all.
So may I ask this question, any of your meetings, you've had your people there, maybe you had Bruce, have you invited Bruce or Adam any of those meetings? Just speak on that behalf so that they can hear from our chiefs.
I-
I've been to one of the meetings, and I've talked about needing something, yes.
Still at the school, we-
I was asked to attend one of the meetings.
I mean, it's just a, it's a, it'd be a help, you know, every once in a great while, one of the chiefs would stop in and say, hey, you know, five minutes, 10 minutes, just to touch on something and-
Yeah, we, we do them every Thursday, Thursday at 7:00 to 4:00 Thursday, 4:00 Thursday of every month because of the two holidays, and we do them on the third.
Well, you have townwide email now, you have an email account?
Yes, I'll be-
You can email our chiefs and let them know if they want to attend, they're available to attend, it's, you know, uh-
Still doing Sunday?
Yes, Sundays are the, we do a little more technical stuff, a train go or something in a refresher, basically.
You guys going to need to backboard me again?
Yeah.
We'd like to.
Yeah, we could do some medical trainings and stuff.
You guys do a good job, you do. We just want to make sure, like you said before, that it's nipped in the bud before it becomes an issue.
Is there anything?
Just that, your next meeting is going to be in January?
December 17th.
December 17th, if you want me to come to that meeting for a couple of minutes and speak, I'd be happy to do that.
Mr. Loretta? I'm all set, good. Hey, Loretta, do you have anything on that? I'm sorry. I think you might have some questions, but-
No, I, I, with your permission, Mr. Chairman, I know, Mr. McKean had begun the discussion on the distinction between emergency management and SERC. Did you wish to continue that?
I would like to get into that a little more.
Sure. That's fine, that's fine. Go ahead.
Well, I gave you a job description that the state follows. We were trying to look at adopting this and making a stipend. Probably have to go through town meeting and whatnot.
Adopting this and making a stipend, stipend, excuse me.
And so I think it was a month, I think it was.
We have to see your position for that yet?
Seth, go ahead.
With your permission, and I don't, I don't mean to deter from what you're discussing, I'm more concerned with the role of emergency management going forward in terms of winter planning now. One of the big things, you know, we've got coming up, the role that emergency management plays in terms of being the liaison with the state in terms of resources, if highway needs it, or resources for the other departments. Can you speak on that?
Well, that's what this job description pretty much takes to get spelled out.
Well, I understand that, but that's, that's going to take some time before that gets implemented, so are you saying that there is no emergency management between now and the time that gets adopted?
No, I'm currently doing this job.
Okay.
That's what-
So do you have a plan with the chiefs and Mr. Woodrow with regards to winter planning?
What kind of?
Say we just get a freak, freak microburst.
Yeah.
And I got an area of South Ridge Road, quarter mile long where every tree there is down. What would be the process of going through emergency management if that would be the process to acquire specialized equipment for the removal of the trees?
Well, our biggest thing nowadays with everything too is, once, when, we'll say that happened, you, I started listening to it on the radio. From that point, you start logging, because that's the biggest thing. Because once they go back, FEMA, you've seen what the-
Right, I'm just, I'm not even saying a statewide thing, I'm saying a quarter mile area on the top of South Ridge Road exclusively in war. I need an excavator and a tuck knife to come in. How is the process of emergency management with that? And I think that's the question that the co-op is going to be asking, correct?
Mm, so.
Well, I could get in contact with some of the state teams and we can go from there. We'll need, see what resources FEMA can give. And I could say, as soon as you, if an emergency has to be done, get the equipment. Say you ran an excavator for 25 hours from-
ABC.
Yeah, two times the time. Say you needed, there's all these different teams of trailers and stuff from Homeland Security, road devices, those blinking sign boards, you could get all into Homeland Security, you can call up all the way from, say, Pass Wister, say, I-
Right, and that's, and that's something that I have access for just hopefully, just with the exclusive co-op that Warren and Wong's do. So, so I guess, what aspect would it become an emergency management situation? I mean, as soon as myself or the other two chiefs agree that this is an emergency situation, would you take care of it, or just an iPhone call to you, and then it becomes involved?
That's the point, that's the most important thing, initially saying, just hit, half an hour later, you start, and then someone's there writing everything down, receipts, saving receipts, everything.
Right, yeah.
Because that's the only way FEMA's going to ever go to.
But can you help them get additional equipment if needed? Was that part of where you were going with that?
I think, yeah, I think that's kind of-
Yeah, do you have contacts at the state to say, we, you know, you know what, just hit the fan, we need X, Y, Z?
Yeah, you would, you would start going down through the bunker, the bunker down in Framingham.
Right, when it's, I mean, it's-
It, it won't like appear, drop out of style.
Oh, no, I totally understand that.
I'm saying, you know, you could start mobilizing.
You have options, though, I mean, you're able to get other equipment if you need to, but I mean, I guess is the question you're trying to ask, are you asking for him to facilitate that request? If we need additional equipment and resources to help, whatever that process is, are you asking us to say that that should be, Jimmy, facilitate that request to go ahead and get that, those calls made?
Well, to my understanding, if it's, if it's an emergency management situation like that-
That's what they don't see.
It would go through the emergency management director, to my knowledge.
Any, anytime, if I may, for just a moment, any event that severely impacts a community, whether it's weather-related, whether it's, you know, domestic terrorism, whatever the situation may be, if there is an issue that happens, you know, what's supposed to happen is an emergency operations center is supposed to be basically, you know, initiated, you know, either myself, Bruce, Tom, you know, Jim would sit down, you know, I mean, there may be up, you know, there may be issues where, where we may be incident commanders at the scene, we may be, you know, running ICS, we may not be available. The emergency manager at that time, you know, unless we could get freed up and pass off command to somebody, emergency manager could, you know, be coordinating some of the asset stuff, they certainly could. You know, I carry lists, I'm sure Jim has the same list, Chief Spierkoski, Tom. We have lists of, you know, where, in Tom's case, where there is sign boards, where there is cones, barricades, traffic, you know, anything traffic-related. We know exactly where Central Mass has put those entities, those commodities, and, and those can be called in. So that's certainly something that the emergency manager could be in charge of and could be put and tasked with, because it takes the pressure off of us because we're probably dealing with the scene directly there, you know? So the emergency manager is going to be not an incident commander with us in the trenches, it's going to be someone that's in the emergency operations center that's coordinating events that, you know, and assets that could be taken from the state first, FEMA could be reached out to FEMA and assets there, could be the state fire marshal's office, I could be calling in additional rehab units, all kinds of technical equipment, hazmat teams, the whole nine yards. All of that stuff, you know, the emergency manager and, you know, the other department heads are going to be part of in that operations center. Like I said, there's also mutual aid thing.[1787.52] You know, like I said, there's also mutual aid things, so, so certainly, you know, the emergency manager has, you know, direct phone call, the direct telephone lines to FEMA to facilitate any equipment that is needed at that point, they have a whole cache of stuff. So, you know, I, I think that's a kind of the simple answer to it, that absolutely there is equipment out there that could start rolling with simple phone calls.
That's, that's exactly what his job description says.
Yes. He is a liaison, but the emergency manager is a liaison between state and federal entities to be able to, to facilitate that type of emergency equipment, you know, in, in that event.
So moving forward, Jim, you're looking for us to adopt this job description at some point and discuss the possibility of a stipend for the position?
Yeah.
Which can be done at a later meeting, I mean, we don't have to discuss that tonight. But I guess I needed this information so that we could move into that next step if we're gonna, we're gonna go that route. We're not discussing that tonight, but I need to know where the directive was coming personally, myself, and how we're gonna move forward. And I'm not saying that there's not a call for it and a need for it, but, you know, I, we need this information in order to decide if we're gonna adopt this or how we're gonna move forward with presenting it to the town down the road, let's make it there, so. I have nothing further, anybody else, Jim?
Good, sir.
So Loretta, no. Guys, Bruce, Adam, Tom?
We've covered this.
No. One quick question, Mr. Brouse, it's a working meeting.
Yes, I understand. Is it, is there, is there any mutual aid agreement right now between the town and the CERT team?
Mutual aid agreement?
For, let me just get, if I can just provide a quick example. So in other words, if, so if there is an activation and the emergency management director is contacted and then he, and then, say you need to operate a shelter, so Jim would then activate the CERT team. If, I would think in my, in my personal opinion, if there was some type of mutual aid agreement that was between the CERT team and the town, that the liability issues would be covered under that, so in other words, the town would be, so the mutual aid agreement would allow CERT members to do volunteer work for the town as well as Jim provided services for the town. But having that mutual aid agreement would then, those volunteers for that CERT team would actually be covered under the town's insurance policy. I don't know if there's any charge for it, maybe it's free, but at least there's a written agreement that, cause it would, you know, it would be very sad if for some reason a volunteer were to get hurt or whatever, then there would be the type of thing that would come up saying, well, the town asked him to be there, he's doing this, is he a volunteer, is he not with the town, you know? So just, I think that a mutual aid agreement would connect.
That's the whole point of what we're saying, if they're activated by, they are covered by insurance, right?
Okay.
Now, as long as they're activated, by the, by the two heads.
I believe that's what the woman who came in as well, talking about emergency management and CERT, when she ran that down, that that's how that all ran.
Oh, okay.
So it does, it, it, and good question, but it does make perfect sense, if they're activated, they're covered. They self-activate.
Well, that's why I was mentioning that, correct, exactly.
I don't think there needs to be that agreement in that at all.
Oh, okay.
I think it just falls in once they're activated.
You know, to, to conclude on this meeting tonight, guys, I think we, we understand where the directives, directives coming from. The protocol is in place moving forward, I think we can look at this job description and look at the funding sources leading into spring. Thanks discussion we're gonna have to have, you're gonna have to have with our board moving forward. And I mean, I feel better as to right now knowing where the directive is coming from, so. I appreciate everybody coming in, is there anything you'd like to add, Jim?
Well, currently, what is the meeting right now, what is this, are we following something written? Am I, is this still with the?
That's still in place, yeah, no, any changes to a job description or salary.
Okay. So I, you attend to all the meetings and stuff with.
Yes, no, yes, that's still in place, we're just looking to see the directive where it was coming from. If we're gonna look at the job description, the funding source down the road. I just wanted to hear from the chiefs and Tom as to, you know, how you're being activated and, and, you know, what the protocol is. And I've heard some different things, so it's just best to get everybody in, so everything's staying in place.
So, so self-activation on my behalf, if I go check with them first, that's not, that's not called self-activation, so we all understand that.
If we authorize the activation, we're gonna have to wreck it up in no longer.
Right.
So if you call dispatch.
Self-activation is, you don't contact any of these guys and you show up somewhere and nobody's aware of it, that's a self-activation. We need them to be.
That's again, like Adam said, if that's what you people are trained for, they're first responders, you know, that's different than showing up to sweep the street.
Plus, they're the experts, they're gonna know, they may want you somewhere else rather than where you think you should be going. And you may turn around and say, you know what, Jim, we need you guys if you are going here. So I would actually want to see it coming from one, two and three down the road, making sure that that's happening.
I think that's, there's another example, we had a couple of the major flooding incidents we had at West Warren over the last couple of years. That would absolutely be an event where I would want the emergency, the CERT team, emergency manager contacting, saying, listen, I got this equipment, I got these people available. Do you want me to, you know, absolutely, absolutely, but do we need it for a routine car accident on the, no, absolutely not, you know what I mean? But that's your decision to make, but I think that, again, it just has to be made sure for the accountability and for the, you know, liability that it is, it is requested, you know what I mean, that is, you know, do you need us there, it sounds like you may have a decent incident going on? Yeah, absolutely, come on up, you know what I mean? Not just, you know, that's what we're talking about.
So with that being said, anything further, Michelle? Is it good? Good, sir. Loretta, you good?
I'm good, gentlemen, thank you.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
Yes, sir.
Motion's made, second in favor.
All right.
Thank you, everybody, thank you guys, appreciate it.
Plenty of time for the football game, guys, again, Galvin.